I'd like to call the Town of Air Select Board meeting to order for Tuesday, July 16, The meeting, hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carley Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are two changes to the agenda this evening. The Devon's Crest Tenant Association presentation will not be here, and the voter ID state ballot initiative will not be here. Other than that, any other changes?
I have none.
I have none.
I will make a motion that the agenda be approved as amended.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Approved. No announcements tonight?
I have no.
All right, so our first item up will be a recognition of the volunteers of Independence and Air Celebration.
Mr. Chair, if I may. If I could ask Amy Mesher, Becky Willamson, I hope I pronounced it wrong, the spelling throws me, okay, and Beth Condon to please come up.
What? You guys stand over there. So Amy, Becky, and Beth, on behalf of this board and many in town, I would like to thank you for stepping up to the plate to create a fun-filled Independence Day celebration. The hard work and organization skills used to put on this event cannot be taken lightly. The working with various departments, vendors, trying to rally volunteers to assist, this was without a doubt hard work, and we commend you for it. To put on this event, you often took two steps forward and then three steps back, but you never lost sight of the goal, to create a day of fun and a memory of fun. And you did. People loved the parade and the events in the park. People saw the effort put into it, and they did appreciate it. Just like the path to independence was not done in a day, you worked hard over the months, putting aside some of your own personal time to work on this because you wanted to give back in a fun way, back in a fun way. You did. Never forget, you did. I also wanted to take a moment to request that next year, this board ask Mother Nature to come to a meeting so we can discuss having a no rain on Independence Day celebrations in air in the future. And now, with pleasure on behalf of this board, to Amy Mesher, Becky Willamson, and Beth Condon, on certificate of recognition, the certificate is presented to each of you. On behalf of the Town of Air, the Select Board extends their sincere gratitude for your hard work and dedication in planning the Independence and Air Celebration. Signed, Chauncey Copeland, Chair; Christopher E. Taveras, Vice Chair; Jason Livingston, Clerk, Air Select Board, Presented this day of July 16, 2024. Thank you again.
Should we get a picture?
Yes.
So you can, it can be in front of us. Okay.
Short people in the front.
I'm always, I'm always in the back row.
I've never made it to the back row.
Over here, three, two, one, and a couple more. Great. And actually, Becky, can you hold up your certificate? Yeah, there we go. It looks more.
Streamable.
There we go.
Good. Thank you.
Would it be possible to say a couple of thank yous?
Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Yes. Where's my chair? Oh! Yes. That way we can get it on.
First, let me thank you for the recognition on behalf of the three of us and everyone that worked so hard for this event. Yes, Mother Nature has not been very cooperative, and it is quite disheartening when that happens. So we would appreciate, Chief Gill does a great job for the parade and makes sure it doesn't get rained out, but the rest, we may need your help on. So I would just really like to thank the folks that, when we came to them with questions, they were there no matter what to support us. And Chief Gill, for one, Chief Johnston, Deputy Chief Bigelow, Superintendent Dan, I call you DPW Dan in my house. My father was a superintendent, a highway superintendent for many years, and he was DPW Dad, so DPW Dan. Alan Menoin, of course, he got all of my, what does this mean to the thank you so much, right? He got all of the in-between. Janice helped quite a bit throughout all of this. She became a huge contact person for me. Her husband Sam, I am telling you, that man flew, I don't know, 752 hours and still showed up to line the field and make sure that every vendor had a spot, had a space, everyone was safe, the field did not get ruined, and at one point, he just looked at me and said, can I go home? Yes, go home. We were getting rained out, go home. Becky and Beth, there's no way this could have happened without either one of them. We are truly, truly a team, and I appreciate everything that they give to this community. We come from it from very different places. Some of us have been here a short time, some of us have been here almost our entire lives, and somewhere in between. I'd also like to thank softball happened on Sunday. Somehow, the sun came out and softball happened, so I thank you to Nina and Becky for making that happen. But the appreciation does not go unnoticed. We appreciate your support, and thank you for all three of you being in the parade. That was a big hit, so thank you so much.
It was fun.
Yep. That was a nice Model T.
Yeah.
It was very roomy. That had some excellent legroom in the back. It was really impressive.
We have to request classic cars that only tall people get.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again, everyone.
Is there anybody on or here for public input? Moving on to our next item, which is a request for a host community agreement waiver for Central Ave Compassionate Care, Inc., and Late Spring, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, through you and members of the board, if there isn't objection, I'd ask Mr. Mark Hillier and Mr. John Hillier to just come up to the table.
Sure.
What is before the board for your consideration, as the board is aware, with the marijuana industry, many communities have had host community agreements. These agreements are often necessary where a facility may have impacts to municipal services and so forth, to spell that all out. They're not required, but they're often for communities and facilities where there have been issues and so forth. As the board knows, since both Central Ave and Late Spring, both facilities, since 2020, when we started this, there have been no, not only have there been no issues of impact to the Town of Air, but there have been no cost impacts as well. There is a strong, positive relationship between this entity and the town, and therefore, in reviewing it, you know, with Town Council and the other departments, did not see any applicable reason to have a host agreement. So we're respectfully recommending waivers for both. There's two, one for community for compassionate care and one for Late Spring. The parties can mutually request in the future a host agreement if needed, and in the event that these entities were to sell or what have you, that would also open up another opportunity there. So that's just to sort of frame it, and I don't know the Assistant Town Manager, I know worked on it, if I missed something or...
Yeah, so originally, when the law came to be, host agreements were absolutely required.
Right.
And what was happening was a quid pro quo kind of situation where you donate this much money, we'll give you a license. The state saw that as impeding business, obviously. We had one, you know, just expired with Central Ave and Gage, the beautiful Welcome to Air sign down the street, that's a result of that. Mr. Hillier has also, both have donated funding for the Youth Works program that DPW hosts every year. So the legislators, legislature changed host agreements. Basically, you couldn't ask for money in exchange.
Right.
You're basically treating one sector of a business much different than any other business in your town. We track the costs as prescribed by law. It's negligible, under $50 a year for Central Ave and under $200 a year for Gage Cannabis, that's a five-year average. So each department tracks if there's any extraordinary costs or contributed by the operation of both facilities, we've never seen that. So we, you know, talk with Town Council, we think the waiver, so, I'm sorry, with the change in the legislation, you can either do a host agreement or a waiver. One is required. We, you know, in reviewing all of our finances, and certainly the donations that Mr. Hillier has made to support the Youth Works program, we feel very comfortable that the waiver is the best route for the Town of Air. And Town Council agreed that, you know, not every town has a great working relationship with their owners. We do, we're lucky, and they're always just a phone call away, and we've had a great working relationship.
Any questions?
I have no questions. I mean, it's been a pleasure having them around, and I know that the Gage sign is very popular. So, but yeah, it's hard to believe, it's been this many years. Yeah. So.
I'll take a motion.
So respectfully, we'd request two separate motions, one for Gage and one for Central Ave.
Central Ave and then Gage.
And it's signature by the chair.
All right, so I will make a motion for a host community agreement waiver with Central Ave Compassionate Care.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Chair says aye.
And I will also make a motion for a host community agreement waiver for this Gage, right, that's the second one, for Gage, is that what we just called it? I don't see it written out here.
Late Spring, Inc.
Oh, Late Spring.
Yeah.
Okay, Late Spring, Inc.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye.
And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, we have appreciated your faith in us from the beginning, and we have had a great, a great relationship, working relationship, and I thank the town for recognizing way back when that the host agreements weren't a friendly way to do business, and we just, we appreciate the opportunity to sit with you at the table, and if anything arises, we are just a phone call away, and we're not going anywhere, so.
Great.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add publicly to thank John and Mark, and it was really John's vision from the beginning, the DPW Youth Works program, and this is many years ago, it was modeled after a program, as I understand it, that was transformative in John's young life. It was his idea, and it has been transformative here in air, and the DPW director and his team do a good job with that, and we appreciate their continued support, and we're just finishing session one just somewhere, but it's really changed the life for a lot of young people in air, and just wanted to thank John because that was your idea.
Yeah, thank you, Robert. It was a great program as a kid, and the thanks go to Dan really for putting the effort into, you know, to get the kids through the process and give them the opportunity, so. I'm sure it's extra work for you, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, they get to learn a lot, you know, we have a lot going on, water, sewer, roads, warm water, they get to see everything, and you do a lot, so.
It's a great opening for them, for sure.
All right, well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. Are you in tomorrow? Okay. James, it's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up, Dan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair. All right, so I have several items. The first one is the monthly water supply update. So just in general, the recently input outdoor water ban has been helping. So for the week of July 1st, that Monday, that week, we did end up needing Devon's assistance midway through the week, the tank levels got low, around 36 feet is where we sort of give Devon's a call, see if they have any excess capacity, so we augmented with Devon's that week. Last week, we didn't have to, we did get down to about 38 feet in the tanks, and so we monitored them daily and just tried to keep up with the demand. So it does seem that the outdoor water ban is helping, and people are adhering to that. We also did put together an educational webpage, you may have seen if you drill down through the water ban notice, which kind of tells us exactly what's happening. It's a treatment capacity issue, so the treatment plant at Grove Pond's the issue, not the water supply. There's plenty of water supply, we just can't pump it through the treatment plant. And then the solution, the Clearwell storage tank, that design's moving forward. We just finished a design workbook and concept design that's completed, it's going through the Army review, they are looking at it as well as us, the town, and also at the same time, we're conducting a pilot study that Mass DEP requires, and I should mention, that's funded through a grant fund through Mass DEP as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, which we were able to obtain. So, and the schedule still remains the same, aiming for construction in early 2025 is what we're going for, so. Any questions on water update at this time, or? Okay. Next item, the execution of the contract for 2024 water system hydrant replacement. So this was designed in-house, you know, a combination of our engineering division and water division, as well as Kimberly, Water Sewer Superintendent and myself, and there'll be 16 hydrants around town which are old, which may only have two valves, and not just the three with the steamer. So we like to replace these on occasion, we did it probably four years ago, we did that. So this project was bid, and the low bidder is Five Oaks Construction out of Groton. I should note, there's also an add alternate to the project, which is to replace water service lines and abandon a water main, so on West Main Street in front of the fire station to Mechanic Street, there's actually two water mains there, and when they put the new one in, they didn't transfer the services to the new one. So we occasionally see this in some streets, which is not, not pretty. So now we have to go back and transfer those, because we wanted to pave that section of road this year, but we don't want to do it with this here. So that's part of the project as well, and so I'd recommend a vote to execute the contract with Five Oaks Construction for $194,025, and that's signature by the board.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. I haven't either.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board execute the contract for the 2024 Water System Hydrant Replacement Project in the amount of $194,025 for signature by the board.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
The next project, or next item, is execution of a contract for a Jonathan Drive cross-country water main. I gotta say, I'm pleased to see this day has come because it's been a hurdle. If you recall, this project required three easements, and the hardest one was through DCR's rail trail, and so that involved state legislature action and Article 97 disposition. So we finally have cleared the red tape and the hurdles, and we're moving forward with the project. So for the project, the low bidder, prime time development, is $188,675, so that's what the contract is for. But if, if you notice in the packet, we're recommending reallocating $30,000 of ARPA funds from the Spec Pond Treatment Plant Filter Media Project. So that Spec Pond Filter Media Project was completed in May of 2024, and it was completed under budget. And so from that project, there's a surplus of approximately 70, well, it's, have a surplus of $77,386.07. And so that surplus is ARPA, and we could take $30,000 of that to augment the Jonathan Drive project, which came in higher than we expected, and that would help give us a cushion for contingency on the project. So the recommendation would be to take $30,000 of ARPA from that leftover from the Spec Pond Filter Media, and then, and also vote the contract for the project. I think you see the requested motions in the memo.
Mr. Chair? Yep. Just to add, just for the record, the town confirmed both with the Department of Revenue and our ARPA consultant that we can do that transfer, so it is appropriate if the board decides to.
Yeah. We work with Cary and Arpa.
Any questions?
No?
Okay. I'll take a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion for the Select Board to vote to execute the contract for the Jonathan Drive Cross Country Water Main Project in the amount of $188,675.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. And then the second motion?
I will make a motion for the Select Board to vote to authorize up to $30,000 of ARPA funds for the Jonathan Drive Cross Country Water Main Project.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Would you like me to continue?
Sure.
Okay. Next item, execution of contract for the wastewater valve installations at Main and Central Pump Stations. So we have funding for this project in about $160,000. We bid the project, and the project came in at $141,350, and the low bidder is Sherburne Consolidated. They've done work in town before, they replaced the West Main Street Pump Station for us, and they did a good job, so we're happy to have them for the project, so that's essentially, we're replacing 17 valves inside the two main major pump stations in town, which is needed. We already have the valves on hand, so that's for signature by the chair.
Questions?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board vote to execute the contract for the wastewater valve installations at Main and Central Pump Stations Project in the amount of $141,350 for signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
There's three, they're marked with the green.
Yeah, this is old school, there's three, it's for the chair. The next item is related to the Right Way Sewer Pump Station. So we've completed the design for upgrades to that station, and after a lot of analysis and design work, and including going out to a factory site visit, we've concluded that it's in our best interest to use a proprietary pump system. It's essentially an inline pumping system, so as the sewage comes in, it continuously pumps it up to the gravity main through the force main. So being a proprietary system, in Massachusetts procurement laws, you're technically supposed to, if you do bidding, you're supposed to have up to three models listed with an or equal option, but you are allowed to for, in certain instances, where it's in the best interest of the town to vote to use proprietary equipment for a project. We did it for the PFAS project when we went forward with the treatment plant. So, long story short, we're requesting the board vote to authorize the proprietary pump specification, which is included in the Right Way Pump Station bid documents, included in the packet through a memo through our consultant time line.
Any questions?
No?
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the Select Board to vote to authorize the use of a proprietary pump specification for use in the Right Way Pump Station upgrade bid documents.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
All right, and the last item I have is an agreement, intermunicipal agreement for our Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition. So essentially, the Town of Spencer would do the administrative work for the Central Massachusetts Stormwater Coalition, and now that's moved over to the Town of Shrewsbury, so the amendment basically is shifting the, shifting the burden to the Town of Shrewsbury. And we will still pay the same amount of money per year, it's $4,000 per year to be part of Central Mass Stormwater Coalition, which has been very useful to us, so just vote to execute the amendment based on what I described.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board vote to execute the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Spencer and the Town of Shrewsbury for participation in the CMRSWC for signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Chair says aye.
All right. A lot of business, but that's all I have.
That's it? Slacking. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, good to see you again. In terms of the administrative update, you have in the packet the town warrants that have been reviewed and approved since the Select Board last met. A couple of just brief items on the administrative updates since the board last met, we're just about completed successfully closing out the FY '24 budget, which is good, and we're, believe it or not, starting initial preparations on the FY '26 budget, which will keep the board updated with as we get very close to the budget calendar for the year ahead, which we'll discuss at the August meeting. Also, in looking at the calendar historically, for your August 20th meeting, we'll be asking the board to already open officially the Fall Town Meeting warrant to start that process. Departments are in the process of completing current capital projects, and many of the ones that were just approved at Town Meeting have either started or they're preparing to start on that front. The Town Planner and the Planning Board and other departments are working on the MBTA zoning, which is going to be a state, is a state law requirement, so the MBTA zoning, which the board will be updated and briefed on shortly as we get closer to Town Meeting, will have to be considered by Town Meeting in October. Additionally, as the board's probably aware, the Stormwater Utility Group, it continues to do its work in preparation for a recommendation to the Select Board and Town Meeting. And the Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee are also three major things on the forefront, one is they're narrowing down two potential sites for consideration, as well as sort of, is the conceptual design layout of the building, so I envision they'll want to come with another update at that, on that progress. So in addition to that, I think everybody's just trying to, trying to stay cool, so I don't know if there are any questions from the board on any administrative items, and then I have a couple of action items. Okay, the first is a couple of appointments for your consideration. The first... The first one, I'm respectfully requesting and recommending that the select board vote to reappoint the town manager as the town's representative to the MART advisory board, and that's an annual appointment, and the form is in the packet.
What day is MART Day?
MART Day is generally Tuesdays now. They moved from Thursday.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, so I'll make a motion that the select board approve the reappointment of the town manager as the town's representative to the MART advisory board.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye. You are reappointed. Thank you. And then I am respectfully requesting and recommending that the select board vote to reappoint Mr. Bob Williams to the AIR Cultural Council for a term to expire on June 30th of 2027.
So moved?
Huh? Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? Chair says aye. Okay, thank you.
I thought you said.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, unless there's objection, can I move the Parks Department proposal just to last? To give the Parks, they should be here any minute.
Oh, sure.
So I'll just, I'll take that one up last if there isn't objection. The next item is the ARPA Funding Spending Plan, which I do promise to the board by August 20th, we will have, I think, finalized all of it, but as you heard from the DPW Director, which is a positive thing, the Spec Pond came under, so there's, the goalpost moves a little bit more. But there are two things for your consideration. So up until tonight, there was $66,568 remaining, and I talked with all of the town departments in looking at potential projects for consideration. And the first one for your consideration is for 71 Sandy Pond Road, so as the board is aware, the town now officially owns that. And as communicated to town meeting, the next step will be to begin to discuss the planning, design, and initial, any engineering for the use of that site for a parks recreation open space purpose. And a key piece of that is to have the public input and public component in the process. So in talking specifically with the DPW Director, Parks Director, and Planning Director, we are recommending, and the board consider authorizing up to $25,000 for the purpose of obtaining a professional consultant to work with the town for these reasons, and to include a real robust public process. As far as what will come out of this process, we will have a sense then of not only the community involved as to what the project will be, but also what other funding we will need. So just to be clear, this is not, I know the board knows, just for the record, is not towards whatever the project determines, but for planning. So that's the first one, if there's any questions.
I'm looking forward to it, it's gonna be fun.
Okay, so I would, I don't know if the board wants to take both of them together or individually as far as approval.
Oh, did you want to motion for that one? I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Somehow that piece got lost. I'll make a motion that the select board approve ARPA funding up to $25,000 for the Sandy One Sandy Pond Road initial planning and public process.
Perfect.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Thank you, and so the next steps, the DPW Director, I will be back, I think, in August with the plan for the board on that. The second one is the update and review of the town's non-union classification and compensation plan. So AIR, like many other towns, all of the non-union positions are classified in terms of compensation in the grid. And we, it's been some time since the grid, since this has been reviewed and updated. And the key piece of it is, though we have, I will argue, we have the internal expertise to do this, the best practice, and we've always done, is to have a third-party professional consultant look at the whole system and make recommendations to implement it. That way, it takes all of the people out of it that could potentially benefit from it. I want to point out that this would be just to do the update and the review of the system, and this is not, you know, for any funding, that's another discussion, if funding is even warranted. As you can see, it's been a while, and then with, you know, COVID, back in...
2012?
2012, town meeting had approved $6,000 to do the study, taking into account some initial research in time. Up to $10,000 would be sufficient to do this project. I think it would be beneficial for the town that we get this updated. It was something that we were looking to potentially come to town meeting, subject to availability of free cash, but there's an opportunity here, I think we could get it, I know we could get it done before the end of the year. And when I say get it done, is then we'll have a review and an update in next steps. Questions?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I... No questions?
Take a motion?
All right, I will make a motion for the select board to vote to authorize up to $10,000 for the purposes of obtaining a professional consultant to work with the town, reviewing and updating the town's non-union classification and compensation plan.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye. I want to thank the board, and so that original plan put us down to $31,568, which for August 20th, we're finishing up a couple of the proposals for your consideration. I want to add the caveat that we have to add for about $47,000 to that, so we have $78,000. But we're confident when we come to see you in August, we'll have everything in place, and we'll be in good shape.
Wait a minute. So now we're up to over $70,000?
Right.
So there was, okay. So we just approved the $30,000, so if we hadn't approved the $30,000, it would have been $100,000, right? I just feel like somehow I got lost here. If we hadn't have given him the $30,000...
So I, the Spec Pond Filter Media Project, that tossed back $77,000? And we've already had $66-ish thousand? So it was around $130, $140?
Yes.
Yeah, so now... Right, if you need a product.
Dan's too good at this, designing.
It is such a wonderful problem to have, but it's also humorous, because every time we think, oh, yeah, Phil.
So we are, not to sound like a broken record, but on August 20th, in your packet, I think we'll have a final plan.
Okay.
The... So the next item, and if they, I'll do that one last. So the next item, just skipping over the Parks proposal, is a continued discussion of the 20, of the 2024 goals and objectives moving forward. So as discussed last time, I did put a copy of the implementation plan in the packet, along with a memo that was done by the planning board on sort of the status of the implementation plan. And as you can see, and I think the board and the town should be very proud of, we have and continue to accomplish a lot on that implementation plan. Some of those things are ongoing, some of those things have changed. With that being said, in looking at that, I took sort of an initial approach at some goals for consideration. Obviously, the Stormwater Utility Fund recommendation is underway, but I think that's a big goal. The recommendation of the proposed site and funding by town meeting for the Senior Center project, again, is another one. The review and update of the select board policies is due for just another review and update. Review and update of the town's personnel policies and procedures manual, so we're about to start that, and I think that will work well with that in the non-union comp study, we'll get all of that updated, because the personnel policies also were last updated, I think, in 2011, so we need, there's some areas there. Obviously, and the review and update of the, I mean, the preparation of the balanced FY26 budget, subject to review and input from the select board, finance committee, the public, and other stakeholders. I know that's our responsibility every year, but I think it's warranted, that it is a huge goal, because you're all involved, both as the select board, but as individual representatives on various committees. That's a huge undertaking of the town. Establish the FY26 timewide budget calendar, which we'll start to talk about on August. Develop a final plan for the IT department, as I mentioned to town meeting and so forth, this is a transition year on IT, we want to be in a position with the new IT plan for this year. The complete the review and update of the non-union class and comp plan, and the complete the initial planning, design, funding for the future of 71 Sandy Pond Road. So those are some of the things I was brainstorming with. I also put the implementation plan, as I said in the packet, as I think if members have some other ideas or thoughts, you know, maybe by the August meeting or the first September meeting, at the latest, we could, you know, sort of finalize the goals. So that's sort of just an overview, and I just wanted to keep this discussion going. So I don't know if there's any questions or...
It's good to me.
Okay. Last but not least, Sarah, through the chair, if there's no objection, if Sarah Ernst can come up.
Good evening, Sarah.
Hello.
So the last, just to frame the issue, and I know that Selectman Tavarez is very aware of this when he was in his previous capacity as the Chair of the Parks Commission, but this has been a need for some time. The Parks Commission and the Parks Department continues to grow, there's no question, over the years, even with the COVID pause, they did a lot of things. The program continues to grow, the services continue to grow, the infrastructure continues to grow, whether it's the new playground, the beachfront, et cetera. It has always been a one-person, it has been a one-person show, the commission is very involved, a lot of volunteers and people, which is great, but professionally, it's a pretty large department, and it's been a one-person show for all these years, and which is great, but when that individual were to go on vacation or what have you and so forth, it's grown to a point that it needs some level of professional support, just like all of our other larger departments. So the Parks Commission has been supportive of, as is the Director and the previous Director and myself, of creating an Assistant Director of Parks and Rec for the department. And the issue is, we would like to get this started sooner than later. So what the plan is in what for tonight was, A, we wanted to present it formally to you in the sense that you have in your packet, the draft proposed job description, which was developed by the Parks Director and the Commission. The next step, as we do with every position, would be we grade it and classify it, and that's about to start, so that we follow, and it's on the website, a whole process to come up with the grade and the step, which will determine the funding for the position. That's the next step. Then the final step would be the funding for the position. Now normally, if we put it in the budget, the normal cycle, it would not be available subject to town meeting approval till July 1st of 2025. We did it in the normal cycle. We are respectfully asking for consideration, subject to the availability of certified free cash, which we anticipate will happen, is that if the select would continue, consider support of a warrant article for the fall town meeting, for voters to vote the funding. If the funding is voted, it would come from free cash for the position, we could then begin the hiring and implementation of the position as early as, say, November 1st, get that position in place so that when the parks season really ramps up in the spring, we hit the ground running. So the purpose of tonight was to give you a brief update of sort of the plan and the proposal, take any questions or concerns. The next step will be to grade and classify the position, which I will have done for the August 20th meeting, and then we'll know what the salary range is. And then the final, the next step from that, would it be if the board does approve the warrant article, and we have the certified free cash, it'd be up to the voters to fund it. Then that funding would become available, right, we can start that process, and then the position would then, moving forward, be funded in the regular budget. Did I miss anything? All right, Mr. Chair, three, I don't know if Ms. Ernst has anything to add from the need of the position or so forth, from her perspective, and also, I know that Selectman Tavarez was working on this in great detail.
Yeah, I think the one thing that, for like the public's per se conception of this project, would be like, we're going to consolidate the existing positions of the part-time admin, which was me before I became, so right now, we don't have one, since we're still in a transition period with the old Park Director, Jeff Thomas. And by doing so, we also are taking away a part-time maintenance worker's position, which is about 10 to 15 hours, which once again, Jeff's kind of taking on that role as he's staying on with me. And then our seasonal waterfront supervisor would, we'd hopefully incorporate that into the admin, the Assistant Park Director's position as well, so kind of eliminating those areas, so we see the fluctuation of what we already technically have budgeted, and how we can essentially make this and save a little bit of money this way. I think that's like one key point we wanted to make.
Yeah, that's a good point, because, you know, working with this in the past year, we, you're right, we had, you know, 10 hours of admin, and then, you know, a seasonal person for the waterfront, and part-time people that, you know, part-time is tough, because if they get a full-time job, they're gone. And you never know if they're going to come back, and, you know, this position, I always felt was extremely important, in the part about, you know, going on vacation. The Parks Director goes on vacation, and there was no other professional there. And the former Parks Director did such a good job just getting things done, that when you do a job really well, no one knows that you did it really well, right? Because there's no complaints. So, you know, I just want to make sure that there's, you know, this conception out there, oh, you're just, you know, adding another person, you know, and got to pay for this person. But as Sarah said very well, you know, it's kind of consolidating these little pieces into one professional, and then you have a backup, that, you know, the Parks person isn't called on vacation three times in one day, which I know happens. So that, you know, that's just my input to speak on it.
So, Mr. Chair, there's no action item being requested from the board at this point. We wanted you and the public to be aware of where we're at. The next step will be back, I'll be back on the 20th, we'll have the position graded in steps, so we'll have an idea of the funding, we'll have that as an update for you. And then ultimately, the ask will be, when the board does the warrant, to have a warrant article for the funding for consideration by town meeting. And, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I see, Jeff, how are you? We just sort of finished the overview. Did you want to add anything as far as the need on the position?
Well, I don't want to be redundant with any points that were taken. Can I step forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Sarah did a good job presenting part of what we were looking to do, the reasons why we wanted to do it, and some of the justifications for doing it. The biggest point I can make, and again, probably a reiteration of what she talked about, is how the Parks Department role in the town has expanded since that position was first invented about 30 years ago. And it's encompassing a lot more, especially with the programs, and then also with some of the actual details of maintenance and things like that that we're doing. So with that, it's become, I believe, an impossibility for one person to be the only employee of that department. So having a second full-time employee in the assistant role, I think, would be essential. I wouldn't even consider it, you know, something that's a benefit, it would be essential. I wouldn't even consider it, you know, something that's a benefit, it would be essential at this point. So that's my main points to it, and I can get into more details on another time if you'd like.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
All right. Thank you both.
Yes, thank you both very much.
Matt Dash from the field.
Excellent.
It was a great time, though. Look at soccer, it's beautiful.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, unless there's any questions, that completes my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Next up would be new business, there's select board member questions, didn't see any. Does anybody have any questions there?
No.
All right. Next up is the approval of meeting minutes for June 18th, 2024. I didn't see any edits or...
No, I reviewed them. They look fine to me.
I saw nothing, so. I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes from June 18th, 2024 be approved or submitted.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Minutes are approved.
You're the chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.